Councilmember Vega.
Here.
Councilmember Cordova.
Here.
Councilmember Ball.
Here.
Mayor Potem Dirk Starbuck.
Present.
Mayor Janelle Osborne.
Here.
Before we check on reportable action from closed session, just an update for those of you that are watching or trying to listen. The radio connection is down, but the streaming and the Tap TV Channel 23 is working. So we are aware of our radio situation, and we apologize, but you can get it through either Tap TV or online through our streaming link. Or come on down. Mr. Malavi, did we have any reportable action from closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. City council met in closed session to discuss the two items, one real property negotiations item and one existing litigation item. Staff had a discussion with council on those two items, and council gave direction to staff, but no reportable action was taken.
Thank you so very much. All right, is Pastor McIntosh here with us this evening? All right, he was on schedule, but since he isn't here, we'll move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a couple of presentations. So this couple is going to be a representation of the proclamation I'm about to read. So they don't know what's going to happen to them, but I want to invite Carl and Elena Jones to come receive this proclamation. I'm so glad you're here. It's called the Extra Mile Day. Whereas Lompoc, California is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. And whereas Lompoc is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. And whereas Lompoc is a community which chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. And whereas Lompoc acknowledges the mission of Extra Mile Americas to create 550 extra mile cities in America and is proud to support Extra Mile Day, which was November 1st, 2023. Now therefore, I, Janelle Osborne, Mayor for the City of Lompoc, California, do hereby proclaim November 1st, 2023 to be Extra Mile Day, and I urge each individual in the community to take time on this day and any other day to not only go the extra mile in his or her own life, but to also acknowledge all those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, community, country, or world a better place. We had Make a Difference Day on the 28th. There were lots of community events going on. So we didn't have as big a turnout as we had in the past, but those of you that turned out were great. I want to recognize Carl and Elena because they often do little extra things on a regular basis. They go the extra mile without even having a day declared as extra mile. They pick up trash. They get involved in local organizations that are struggling with membership. They shine a light on the positive things that are happening. They're here at council on a regular basis advocating for those that may not be able to attend. And so when I was invited to add, Lompoc is an extra mile city, had asked if there was an organization or anyone I wanted to recognize, and you guys first came to mind. So I want to gift this proclamation to the both of you, and thank you for being a shining example of how you both invest personally in the community and broadly. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right, where are my law enforcement records, people? Come on up, because I, I have a proclamation for you. And this is not an easy job. This is support work that sight unseen, right? But if you guys aren't maintaining those appropriately, it makes it difficult to follow through on arrests, to go to prosecution. And so we have a proclamation for Law Enforcement Records and Support Personnel Day. Whereas the protection of California's communities is dependent not only on the individuals to devote their time and energy to the duties of law enforcement service, but also on members of the support staff such as law enforcement records and support personnel, who devote countless hours to performing the duties that keep law enforcement agencies running smoothly. And whereas law enforcement records and support personnel play a crucial role in helping law enforcement agencies identify, pursue, capture, and process suspected lawbreakers. And they continually share their invaluable expertise and experience to assist in tracking felons, maintain criminal statistics, and improve apprehension strategies. And whereas a not-for-profit professional organization dedicated to providing training in the technical and legal aspects of law enforcement records, the California Law Enforcement Association of Records Supervisors Incorporated provides networking capabilities to its members and associates who serve in more than 500 law enforcement and other criminal justice agencies within California. Therefore, I, Janelle Osborne, Mayor for the City of Lompoc, California, do hereby recognize November 14th, 2023 as Law Enforcement Records and Support Personnel Day throughout this city, and applaud Lompoc Police Department, police records technicians, community service officers, and support personnel for their invaluable contributions to the Lompoc Police Department. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for all the work you do keeping our community safe by being really the cog that makes sure the wheel turns, right? Thank you so very much, and microphone is yours if you'd like to say.
We just want to say thank you. It's, it's unique to work for the city, and even more unique to work for the police department. And this is the best team in the city. I've got it. I was blessed with it. They are them. They are the ones that are dedicated. They know their job. They're dedicated to the city. And no matter what comes through their doors, and a lot comes through our doors. Because you get it too. They handle it with a smile, and I appreciate them, and we appreciate you. Thank you.
And the next presentation will be from the Lompoc Valley Flower Association regarding past and upcoming events.
That's a tough act to follow. Every year, we like to come before you, Honorable Mayor and council members, and thank you for taking the time to listen. I'll go through this briefly, because I know you guys are busy tonight. Go ahead to the next slide. So the Lompoc Valley Festival Association, a lot of people think we're the city. We work with the city. It's a good partnership, I believe. But the association is made up of a volunteer organization. There's about 50 members, paying members. It's a whole $25, I think, to join. But mostly, it's workers. It's the people who put on the event. And a lot of times, you'll see them with yellow jackets running around in the festival. They have about a $200K budget to put on what they put on, and they barely squeak by with that. If they're not making a lot of money, they roll it all back into the next year's event. There's one paid staff person. All the rest of the people are volunteers. So all the effort you see going on in the park is people in Lompoc working for a community event. They organize, manage, and execute the festival. They help with the Christmas parade, but they put on the Flower Festival Parade, obviously with a lot of city help. And they do the queen selection and the scholarships and the coronations for the ladies who compete for that. They're thinking about starting the Spring Fest, the spring events that they've done in the past. We'll have to see how we do with the festival this year. June 22nd to the 25th was last year's. This year, it'll be the 20th to the 23rd. There's about 15,000 people attend. We don't count the folks that sneak in, so it might be a little higher. But we figure about half of that's local, the actual people in our city coming to the event. But that's about 7,500 people coming from out of town, too. We have about 25 food booths and trucks, 33 vendors. We're always looking for charities, local charities and local social groups get first dibs on having food booths or vendor places. So if you know any charity that wants to raise a little money, we're happy to help them and see them come forward, and they'll get a premium spot. There's 17 carnival rides last year, and there were 48 parade events. I'm not sure, but I think it was the first consolidated council float. And I was amazed at the number of people thought how cool that was. If you can keep doing it, the people seem to like it. We have significant city participation, particularly in the parade, and also in preparing for the festival and working with the police to make sure everything's secure. We rebuilt the stage backdrop last year, and I believe the city used it for the Fourth of July. So we shared, shared that, and we'd certainly do that again. But again, it's dedicated volunteers that do that. We really wanted to recognize the city. There's four particular areas. I'm sure we have lots of other areas that are helping. But Parks and Recs, Mario and his staff have been instrumental in having the success. The city maintenance crew, Danny and the crew, they always go the extra yard. And Public Safety and both sides, police and fire, have already started working with us this year. We've already had a meeting to discuss ways we can improve. And of course, sanitation is always something you've got to handle, and that team worked really well. So again, it's a nonprofit organization, but the city plays a big part in it. It's really a community event. Association is just representing the community. Next year, we hope to have a larger carnival. We think more younger children rides would be good. For those who went, it seemed like that area could improve. Like I say, we've already started early planning with the city. We had a pretty good template. We worked with them last year, and so that allowed us to start earlier this time. We're also trying to get a little bigger headliners, still including local people. Drew Baldridge is a Saturday night. We're looking for a headliner for Friday night. We tend to have local folks on Thursday and Hispanic on Sunday. We may stay open a little bit later, because the Hispanic seems to be very popular, and that was one of the suggestions on the Sunday. We'll still close earlier than we do on Friday and Saturday. We'd love closer participation with the city. We had three requests this year. We know that the stage, we've been talking to Mario, is going to possibly be improved if funding available. We'd like to be involved in that planning, because we think we're one of the major users of that stage and think we can add value. We'd like to see more police presence, not because we want them to run the security of the park. We understand that's the association's responsibility. But we want to embrace our local community and the police, and I've talked to the police chief. And we'd welcome a booth there, for example, with the police explorers or something along that line. And we'd like to see the little concrete pads. A couple of those are getting cracked. And those are where the food trucks and the booths go on the park. So it avoids damage to the park, and Mario said he's going to try to look at that and see what we can. And this year's theme is Shoot for the Stars. So we think that's a good, appropriate one for all the rocket launches we've been having. So I think that's, I don't think there are any more slides, right? So I'm out of your hair now. I want to thank you for taking the time and listening, and everybody come to the fair.
Thank you, and thank you to all of you that volunteer to make sure it goes off without a hitch. And thank you for providing those insights and recommendations with enough time to consider them. Really appreciate that. All right, we will come back to our agenda, and our city manager, Dean Albro, is at an American Defense Conference. So we have Acting City Manager, Kristy Donnelly, to provide an update for us.
Thank you, Mayor. So I have several updates. The first, want to just let everybody know that in observance of Veterans Day, the Lompoc City Hall and other city facilities, including the Lompoc Library and most Lompoc Parks and Recreation Indoor Facilities, will be closed this Friday, November 10th, in recognition of Veterans Day. I did confirm that the Aquatic Center will be open. The Lompoc Library will also be closed on Saturday, November 11th. The Lompoc Landfill will be operating from 10:00 AM to 3:45 on Friday, November 10th, and will be closed on Saturday, November 11th. Trash, recycling, and green waste collection will be on a normal schedule. Secondly, wanted to just kind of give you a heads up in following up after this last presentation that we, city staff are slated to present an update on the Ryan Park projects, including the stage and surrounding areas, including the concrete. And just kind of a presentation on the status of that at the November 21st City Council meeting, I believe. Correct me if I'm wrong, Kristy. So please stay tuned for that. Now, we've got some of the exciting stuff, so get out your pencils and write down on your calendars. We've got the, the Lompoc Library is holding their second annual Tiny Art Show. The tiny canvases are available now at both the Lompoc and the Village Libraries. Please come by and pick up a canvas, create your tiny art, work of art with any medium you choose, and return it to be displayed at the Lompoc Library during the month of December and the Village Library in January. Do have note that the tiny art submissions need to be returned by Thursday, November 30th, to be included in the show. And there will be a tiny art reception with tiny treats that will be held in December, and we can't wait to see your creativity this time around. So I've got a couple more, pens, paper, writing down all these dates. Registration is open for the Lompoc Turkey Trot, taking place on Sunday, November 19th, at the River Park Fitness Trail. Registration forms are available on the City of Lompoc's Parks and Recreation webpage. We would like to invite caregivers in the community to a free caregiver information session on Wednesday, November 29th, at the Dick Dewey's Community and Senior Center. This event will include education regarding caregiving, resources, a complimentary light meal, wellness activity, raffles, and giveaways, and more. Spanish translation will be provided. Signups are being accepted to have breakfast with Santa the morning after the Lompoc Christmas Parade on Saturday, December 2nd. Register online with the Lompoc Parks and Rec. And finally, last but not least, the submissions will be accepted starting on November 15th for the Lompoc Appearance and Beautification Commission's 2023 Holiday Lights and Decoration Contest. And that is all I have.
Well, I think that's a lot of great things going on, and I wanted to add for the caregivers event on the 29th that starts at 5:30 PM.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't hear a time, but I knew what time it was going to start. And so those of you that are caregivers in the community, those that support caregivers, don't hesitate to attend this. It's a great resource putting on in partnership between the city and the Lompoc Valley Community Health Organization. And they, prior to the pandemic, really started investing in trying to provide free information and support systems for the local caregiver community. So take advantage of that and identify a support network for you. Having been a caregiver 20 years ago, when these things weren't talked about and weren't shared, it is huge to have that support network and to identify who else is a caregiver in the community, what kind of support there is out there, and what kind of resources there are, so that you as a caregiver can take care of yourself, because you've got a lot of demands on you. So we want to support you on that one. Any questions for our Acting City Manager before we move on? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to consent calendar. Before we go to public comment, I do need to inform both the community and council that Item 4 is being pulled by staff from the agenda, so Item 4 is being removed, so we won't have that presentation at this meeting. We will now open the floor for public comment on consent calendar for any item other than Item 4. So if you'd like to speak, you're welcome to come to the podium, or you may call in at 805-875-8201. Floor is now open.
Madam Mayor, City Council, so Item Number 6. I believe that, well, I feel that the financial feasibility of this project should become public knowledge before people vote on if they would like to have this property, you know, not be in city property anymore and go to this company that wants to develop this space project, the Space Museum. Because people are being asked to vote on this, and if they aren't aware of the feasibility of this project, they're not going to be well-informed, and they won't be able to make decisions that they might not otherwise make. So I just think some clarification, if this project can actually come, would be, would be great, because the public's being asked to vote on this. Thank you very much.
All right, seeing no one else rise and no one call in, we will close comment on consent calendar. Consent calendar is, all items are considered to be routine and will be enacted after one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the council vote. Any items withdrawn from the consent calendar for a separate discussion will be addressed immediately before the second oral communication near the end of the meeting. Is there an item that any council member has minimal questions on or an item they would like to pull? Councilmember Cordova.
I would like to pull Item Number 6.
All right, Item Number 6 will be discussed after written communications. And before we move on, I just want to say thank you on Item Number 3 to Lena K., also known as W. Lena K. Kapler Trust, for donating a substantial amount to both the youth program and the seniors program from her trust, and I really appreciate that. I just wanted to, even though it's on consent, I just wanted to say a public thank you for, she was a longtime instructor with the program, and in her will left monies to encourage programs continue for both youth and seniors. So we just want to acknowledge that and say thank you. All right, we've pulled Item 4 for a future council meeting. We are moving Item 6 to discussion later in the meeting, so I will look for a motion to approve Items 1 through 1, 2, and 3, and Item 5. Councilmember Ball.
I just had a quick question on Item Number 5.
Absolutely.
Just real quick. So in essence, we're spending, they're need to spend $5 million on getting some new trash trucks, and that's very important. I was just curious, because I know we're behind on our replacement scheduling. I was just, is anyone, can anyone tell me how, how late we are in replacing these? Because we probably should have done it one time ago. Just trying to remember. Because I haven't learned about life cycle and end of life and, you know.
So the easy answer to that question, I'm Brad Wilkie, utility director. The average age of the fleet right now is eight years, and the vehicles that we're proposing to be bought won't be here until '25. So by then, the average age will be two years over the, probably three years over what is usually they can get on the street every day. And they're, they've had an issue with having available trucks to serve the collection routes for several years.
I just wanted to clarify, we're not spending money for no reason, just for fun. We're behind, and we need to catch up, because our stuff's way past end of life. Thank you.
All right. So again, now, if there's no more questions, I need a motion for 1, 2, 3, and 5.
I'll make a motion.
All right, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. So moved, seconded, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. All right. We will now have a staff presentation on the Utility Conservation Cities Holiday Light Exchange Program by Juan Esquera, who is our Utility Conservation Representative. Be kind. He is new in this role, but he is very good at it.
Good evenings, Councilmember Ball, Councilmember Starbuck, Councilmember Cordova, Councilmember Vega, Mayor Janelle, and to everybody in the audience. Thank you for coming. Thank you for your time. So as you, your first question is probably like, can I breathe in this suit? The answer is probably is no, absolutely not. If I pass out, I would like to, for Steven to take him to the hospital or something like that. So.
Just breathe. Really, you can breathe in it.
So our Holiday Light Exchange Program started November 1st. So far, we've had about 15 to 20 customers already participate, so it's been a couple of days. And. Now, I'm going to give you a little bit of background for the program. First question is who can participate. It's exclusively for City of Lompoc Electric customers. It's funded by the public benefit funds. Unfortunately, we reached out to PG&E, to Vandenberg Village. They don't like to participate or give funds for their own customers, so this is exclusively for electric customers. Some of the program guidelines and details. Utility customers may exchange a maximum of five holiday light strands. Preferably, they can be halogen, incandescent. That's really what we're looking for. But unfortunately, I can't test every single strand that comes in. It's just not viable. But they need to provide a utility bill, a current utility bill, some photo identification, and obviously their lights to participate. They will be entered to win LED Christmas light entries and inflatable and any other energy-conserving items, such as a smart plug, such as, like we have power strips, smart power strips, you know, stuff like that. And holiday lights may be exchanged at City Hall Monday through Friday, 9 to 5. Or Fridays, when I'm at Slavingaway at Home Depot, 5 to 8, you know. So that's a little bit of that. So the program benefits really is, really comes down to energy efficiency. You know, we are a winter-peak-ing utility, which means that during the winter, we're using the most electricity. So this, a couple of benefits for the light strands, safer to touch. They're made of epoxy lenses. You can't break. They last up to 10 times longer, and about 75% in energy savings. And we have a video for you guys with the Hollywood budget, you know. If Steven can bring that up for me, that'd be great.
Are old Christmas lights casting a murky glow over your holiday spirit? Do you want to upgrade to energy-saving LED holiday lights, but you're short on cash? Sounds like a job for Captain Christmas Conservation. That's right. Starting November 1st, and while supplies last, Lompoc utility customers are invited to exchange up to five old holiday light strands for brand-new LED lights. Remember also to bring a current utility bill and a photo idea to Lompoc City Hall. Did we mention there are raffle prizes, too? Don't thank us. Thank Captain Christmas Conservation. All in a day's work, my friends. We look forward to seeing you at Lompoc City Hall.
You've really thrown down the gauntlet by raising the bar with, with, you know, Captain Conservation, so.
As you can see, I can assure you no lights or humans were harmed in the making of this video. Thank you for your time, and that's a little bit of the program. It ends, end of January, so let's have a great program.
Thank you for this program. I'm really excited to see you adding the raffle. I think that's new. That's something you haven't done in the past. You've just done the exchanges in the past, I believe?
We've done some raffles, but not as much, not as grand as Christmas tree.
Not as grand, because a whole LED tree as one of the, that, you know, I might bring in my lights I've been meaning to for the past couple of years. Councilmember Ball.
So two quick things. First of all, welcome to the Lompoc team. You did a great job. You did a great job up here. You look so much better than I do, and most of us tonight. You, you, I'm going to wear a tie next time, blame that on you.
Don't.
And, what was the other thing I wanted to say? I, I just want to give a shout-out to you, leading the effort here and getting the word out. I just thank the city, the staff. It's a little gesture, but just doing those little efforts, it's just a little thing, but a lot of people are stressed about electric rates and the cost of all those things, so anything that we can do to help bring that down a little bit during the holidays is very helpful and thoughtful, so thanks for leading on that.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, appreciate it. Appreciate your time.
I just want to follow up one item on what Juan said. He did mention that we're a winter peaker, but what I've seen in the past is we are actually the peak of our load, the top use of our load is Christmas Eve at 5:00 PM. So, this is going, this is something that over time will help, because having too high of a peak makes our cost of electricity at that point in time more expensive, so this helps in more ways than one.
Awesome. Thank you for that additional motivation. I didn't realize that was our highest peak during the winter peak, but it makes sense. Our community really loves putting up Christmas lights. All right, we will now go to oral communications. This is your chance to address any issue within the city that is not currently on the agenda. If you would like to speak to something, you may come forward for three minutes, or you may call in at 805-875-8201. While we wait to see, oh, are you coming to the mic? All right, there you go. I wasn't quite sure if that was just readjusting, or, all right.
Okay, so, usually I'm here to talk about public safety regarding crime. Tonight, I'm here to talk about public safety regarding traffic issues. So, on Sunday afternoon, there was a pretty serious accident. The woman had to be airlifted on O Street at Chestnut. Now, I think there should be a traffic study done, O Street and Walnut and Chestnut, because those are blind intersections. People cannot see, as they're coming out, as they're trying to get into traffic. And the way this accident looked, it looked like the driver was coming down, was coming down O Street, and somebody was trying to cross O Street at Chestnut, and they collided in a pretty severe accident. The, the SUV was very badly damaged, it looked like it flipped. So, there should be something done, maybe some stop signs, you know, some kind of traffic study in this neighborhood, because people are, they're driving higher than the speed limit on O Street, and then people trying to cross O Street, it's a blind intersection, they can't see what's coming. So, I think that would benefit the community. And another one would be Barton Avenue at L Street, because people are trying to cross L at Barton to go to the dog park, to go to the movie theater, to go to the restaurants, to go to the shops. And pedestrians, you know, once again, traffic on Barton, they are not going 25, 30 miles per hour, which is the posted speed limit. They're going faster than that. So, therefore, I think some of those flashing lights that are along Ocean and on College by the high school would also benefit the community, also maybe alert drivers to a pedestrian trying to cross the street there, and just enhance better traffic flow in the neighborhoods. Thank you very much.
Did we have a caller, or was that? Okay. Well, thank you for considering calling in. Again, you're always welcome to. We will now close oral communication and bring it back to the agenda. We have new business, now, item number seven, adoption of resolution number 6614 parentheses 23, approving amendments to the electric rate assistance program. And Juan is returning with backup from our utility director Brad.
I'm happy to be the, the end of the night, you know, it's nice. So, you know, I am the utility conservation rep, so one of our programs that we offer is electric rate assistance for the, those who qualify under our low-income limits. I want to start by explaining our rate assistance program, that way you guys have a little bit of background with the program guidelines, the qualifications, and our processes. These are our current program guidelines. As you can see, for residential customers, they receive up to $9 discount on their electric bill. This, this discount is for 12 billion cycles, 12 months, and a renewal letter sent two months before expiration. For residential mobile home customers, they must fill and sign a usage form every three months, and then they are subsequently sent a check for up to $27 after every usage form submitted, up to four forms, which is the equivalent of 12 billion cycles. For those in the audience that may not know, there's a distinction between mobile home customers, because the mobile home park is technically the, the payer of the electricity, and then the mobile home park themselves bill every mobile home customer individually, based on their metered usage. So, that's why there's a separation between the residential and residential mobile home customers. Residential customers also have a utility account with the city, but in this case, residential mobile home, they need to fill out this usage form. Now, this is a usage form, just for reference. I filled in a couple of dates there, just, just to give an example. But essentially, what we're looking for is a person's name, the address, a good mailing address, because a check has to be sent to the mobile home customer, a good phone number to reach them if I have any questions, or if I need additional documentation. Now, in this form, as you can see, we u- we look for the total kilowatts used for that month, and the charges associated with that kilowatt, uh, kilowattage used. And once they sign and submit this, they receive their $27 discount for the three months, right? The current program qualifications and prerequisites. They must meet the current housing urban development low-income limits. Now, these limits are based on Santa Barbara County area me- medium income, so they are quite high. As you can see, one person's 82, almost $83,000. They need to provide any income documentation for anyone above the age of 18. Some of these forms can be your taxes, can be your pay stubs for the month, could be social security, could be food stamps, any of those kind of income documents. Now, the residents must fill out the application, attach the appropriate documentation, and submit for processing. They can either apply online or in person. We also have a Spanish-translated document. Now, the proposed program changes by conservation is to raise the discount up to $18, increase the renewal period from 12 months to 12 mon- not, 12 to 24 months, eliminating the usage form for mobile home customers, and a submission if required, if necessary, of an affidavit for applicants with no income. Now, the affidavit, currently, we don't have anything in place if they report no income. This is all self-reported. If they report no income, they must note it on the back of our application. That's how we, you know, take no income application. Eliminating the usage form for mobile home residents is, sometimes, will reduce a significant amount of time, staff time, to process the S applications. It, it really, it's really becomes redundant, and it's a lot, it's a, really a headache to constantly go back and forth, hey, where's my usage form? Hey, where, when are you going to send me this? Then I receive, when's my check getting home there? Most of the time, what we find, based on the, the history of the program, most mobile home customers use more than the discount itself, so there should be no problem, you know, removing this usage form. And then increasing renewal period from 12 to 24 months is just reducing staff time to, from all the new applications and all the renewal applications. And to conclude and to recap, the Lompoc's Electric Rate Assistance Program has helped qualified customers since 1997. There was a change in 2006, and the last change was from $8 to $9 in 2009. So, it's been 15 years, 14 years since a, a change. So, this change will provide additional assistance to families who are struggling the most with raising rates. Once again, thank you for your time, and I appreciate it.
All right. Any questions for staff? All right, you're off the hu- oh, the light just went on as I was about to get you off the hook. Councilmember Ball.
Just a quick question. First of all, I fully support anything we can do to streamline and make ourselves more efficient and do a better job. When it comes to eliminating the form for those that are in mobile homes, will that, will the system still be as easy for them to learn about this program, to access this, or is it, is it going to create more of an issue for them to realize this discount?
Absolutely not. We have our, we have our contacts with mobile home parks that, when we take the initiative to reach out to the customer, whether it's mobile homes or just a resident, a non-mobile home residential customer, and we try to get the word out. We try to have events where we hand out these applications. I find that there's little participation, just because there may be not enough outreach on my part, but, you know, rest assured, we are working on that. I am working on that. But, with the usage form, it's easy, just because removing that, they will automatically receive, I have to figure out the details, either each month, the, the discount, or every three months, they will see the check. You know, they all they have to do is qualify.
Awesome.
And then they'll receive it for the 12 months.
Great, awesome. Thank you.
So, at least you had one question. With adjusting it from the 12 to the 24, would it be that would happen every 24 months, or as you just said, every 12 months?
Increasing it to, uh?
Yeah, you said the renewal period from 12 to 24, but you just said every 12 months.
Oh, yeah, I apologize.
That's okay, I just wanted to make sure.
If changed to 24, then it would go to 24 months.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that, that clarity was there, moving it forward.
Yeah.
We will put you on hold while we go to public comment, and then if any questions come up during that timeframe, we'll invite you back.
Thank you, appreciate the time.
Um, if you would like to provide public comment on this item, you are more than welcome to come to the podium, or you may call in at 805-875-8201. I've heard the phone ring a few times, is it on this issue? No, ma'am. All right. No problem. All right, seeing no one rise, we will bring it back to, oh, come on up.
Yes, I would like to speak on this, because my mother resided in a mobile home park in Santa Maria Apa Bradley, and she had, she came across a fire in the middle, in the middle of winter. Her panel was directly behind the headboard. For the panel, for the electrical panel on the outside was on the other side of her headboard, and that burned through that. But she was on oxygen at night, and she had a space heater running at night too. So, we need to put more preventive cautions to the seniors who are on oxygen not to be turning on the heaters at the same time, because that's what caused it. When the temps, temps drop down to 32, that's when this happens. Causes fires. So, I just wanted to put that precaution out there for the seniors.
Thank you for that. All right, seeing no further comments, we'll close public comment and bring it back to council. If there are any other questions, let me know. If not, I'll entertain a motion. Councilmember Cordova.
I'll motion to approve the adoption of the resolution 6614 parentheses 23 for amending the electric rate assistance program.
Thank you.
I'll second.
And Councilmember Ball seconds that. Let's vote. And that passes 5-0. All right, two more, one more thing, and then we will go to item six per the process. So, is, were there any written communications on any item?
No, ma'am, nothing.
All right. Now, we will go to item six. Item six, let me read that into the record. Item six is receive and file report on financial feasibility of Pale Blue Dot's proposed development of a space center project on approximately 82 acres, including and adjacent to Ken Adam Park. And our city attorney is here to provide information and answer any questions on receiving and filing this.
Thank you, Mayor. This is another agenda item that we have tonight that relates to the proposed space-themed project that's being proposed by Pale Blue Dot Ventures on an approximately 82-acre site, including and adjacent to Ken Adam Park in the north part of town, adjacent to the Y. We are in a memorandum of understanding right now with the Pale Blue Dot Ventures Company. We entered into that memorandum of understanding in July 2019. What that does is it provides a period of time where we exclusively negotiate with Pale Blue Dot about potential development and sale of this property to them, and not negotiate with anyone else during the period of the MOU. And we're also restricted to not consider any other developmental purposes for this site during the period of the MOU. One of the terms of the MOU is that Pale Blue Dot was required to provide a financial feasibility analysis for their project for the city council to consider. They did that earlier this year. Actually, they did that at the end of 2022. And the earlier part of this year, we had a consultant, Keizer Marston Firm, do a review of their, of Pale Blue Dot's financial feasibility analysis. We brought that to council on April 18th of this year. Council reviewed, reviewed the conclusions of the Keizer Marston Firm's report, and noted that Keizer Marston admitted in part of its report that it did not have sufficient experience in its opinion related to theme park attractions, or reviewing revenue and cost estimates of theme park attractions. So, council directed staff to engage and hire another consulting firm that does have experience in theme park attraction feasibility analysis, and other types of entertainment center feasibility analysis. So, that was on April 18th of this year. After April 18th, Pale Blue Dot, having heard that direction from council, decided that they wanted to update their projections and estimates about their project, and do an updated feasibility analysis of their project. They did that in the ensuing months, and in August, they, Pale Blue Dot completed a updated finan- financial feasibility analysis. The city then hired a consulting firm called Pro forma Advisors LLC. And the consultant that did the work for us at that firm, his name is Mark Dvorak. This firm is located or headquartered in Hermosa Beach, so they are relatively local compared to the universe of firms that do this, which span the entire globe. Mr. Dvorak has led a variety of market analysis and feasibility projects for destination theme parks, amusement parks, water parks, and attractions around the world, and he even has done a feasibility analysis of a space tourism facility, NASA Spaceport Master Plan. His resume is attached to the staff report as attachment three. And his firm as a whole is expert in this type of feasibility analysis for large-scale, visitor-oriented real estate projects like integrated resorts, theme parks, casino gaming, retail dining and entertainment centers, museums, and specialty branded attractions. gaming, retail dining and entertainment centers, museums, and specialty branded attractions. So, um, with that level of expertise, the city hired, uh, Pro forma advisors to review Pale Blue Dot's August twenty twenty-three financial feasibility analysis. Additionally, I will stop here and say that very recently Pale Blue Dot has put together and submitted to us a brand-new, it's not brand-new, it's just the latest iteration of their project description. And that is attached to the staff report as attachment number two. It's a very, um, lengthy and well-put-together document, I think, that describes all of the attractions and features and elements of the project that Pale Blue Dot is proposing to construct. As a very brief review of that, uh, on page two of the staff report, I have a few bullet points that summarize the elements of the project. It's going to be, uh, a gated visitor attraction containing a collection of activities and experiences with a number of rides and experiences, um, like flight simulators, a domed theater, a virtual reality microgravity, uh, tower experience, a Mars surface rover area, and an underwater, um, immersive experience called an aquatic space lab. This is going to be a, there will be a classroom, laboratory, meeting room, and flex space areas. There'll be youth educational camp facilities for multi-day youth camps. There will be a launch observation plaza where, uh, guests to the park will be able to view, um, launches from Vandenberg, along with an outdoor gathering area in that, uh, facility. There'll be retail space and food and beverage options, and they are proposing a seventy-five room overnight lodging facility that will be available only to park guests, not to the general public, but you, uh, must be a park guest if you're going to stay in that overnight hotel facility. Okay, so back to the feasibility analysis. It is important at, this project is still in a very conceptual spa-, uh, stage, as we all know, but at this early stage, it is still important for the council, uh, to review the financial feasibility of the project because there is an opportunity cost to the city to holding this property off of the market and not consider it for other types of uses during the time that we are exclusively considering Pale Blue Dot's project. So it's important to think about feasibility upfront like this. Our consultant, Mr. Dvorak, he spent a couple of months since August to, um, put together his report and review Pale Blue Dot's feasibility analysis. He also visited the site, uh, in person, and he came, and so what we have in the staff report is a summary of his findings and conclusions. And the reason that we have to, um, include only a summary for the public version of this staff report is that, um, the numbers and project estimates and project projections that Pale Blue Dot provided to us in their feasibility analysis are confidential proprietary information that is owned by Pale Blue Dot. And they have an interest in keeping that confidential so that other developers and other, um, companies cannot just take all of their financial information and use it on another project, or maybe even use it in Lompoc, and become a competitor to Pale Blue Dot. So that makes sense. What we can, uh, publicly report is a summary of the findings and conclusions of Mr. Dvorak, our consultant's, um, report. So I have that on page three and four of the staff report, and I am just going to read the bullet point summary conclusions. While the attraction design is not finalized, it is smaller and has less for guests to do than theme parks and major comparable space attract-, space attractions. Most major space attractions offer genuine NASA facility tours in addition to the visitor center. This may limit the length of stay for guests, the distance that guests would travel, and the amount that they would pay for the attraction. Major changes to the attraction program would need to be reflected in the cost budgets for the project. Number two, the projected admission revenue per guest is much higher than both theme park and space attraction benchmarks. When he says, um, benchmarks, he means what a standard theme park attraction would be, or what a standard space attraction would be. He's saying that Pale Blue Dot's projected admission revenue per guest is higher than what the standard theme park or space attraction, um, would be. And if these premiums are not attained, revenue targets may not be reached. Number three, the projected additional spending by guests inside the attraction, such as on food and beverage or retail, is high in absolute terms compared to the benchmark facilities. And a shorter length of stay limits the potential spending on food and beverage and retail inside the attraction. Number four, a shorter length of stay also limits demand at the proposed seventy-five-room hotel on-site. Due to the fact that, um, the only guests that can stay at the hotel are people who already have a ticket to the park and it's not open to the general public, uh, that further limits the demand for stays at the hotel. And so Pale Blue Dot's projected occupancy rate for the hotel is higher than our consultant would recommend. Number five, space camps are highly popular, and Southern California schools could provide strong demand for the space camp element of the project. The projected space camp attendance is obtainable, but revenue per camper is higher than the benchmarks. Generally, school camps are not high mar-, high-margin-for-profit operations. Number six, uh, Pro forma consultants is not a cost estimation firm, but they have reviewed the development cost budget. Pro forma believes it compares to similar entertainment centers. The development budget per expected annual visitor falls in a reasonable ratio for attractions. However, the absolute attraction budget, meaning the total cost of the attractions, uh, is small when compared to theme parks. Number seven, the projected operating margins are based on theme parks, which are higher than entertainment centers or space attractions. Total operating expense levels may be reasonable when viewed against lower revenue levels. Number eight, the presented project model allocates reinvestment in attractions at a level well below theme park averages needed to drive repeat visitation. Entertainment centers do not require theme park-level reinvestment, but may need a higher allocation than Pale Blue Dot, Pale Blue Dot projects to refresh attractions in the future. And number nine, which is kind of the overall conclusion of Pro forma's report, is adjustments made based on Pro forma's comments would likely lower the presented economic returns of the project. However, the project is likely to generate still more revenue than it costs to operate. As long as there is a surplus, the facility would continue to operate under any ownership structure. Investors and lenders, after evaluating projections and financials, ultimately take on the risk of lower returns. So, very short bottom line is, the conclusion of this report is, the project can operate at a surplus, with revenue coming in exceeding the costs going out. But it will likely be at a, uh, level of surplus or level of profit that is lower than what Pale Blue Dot projected in Pale Blue Dot's estimates and projections for the project that were analyzed. And so investors and banks, in deciding whether to invest in the project or lend to the developer on the project, will need to consider whether they are willing to take on the risk of lower return. Pale Blue Dot, um, has indicated to me that it will be responding to some portions of this report, and I don't know when we will receive that response, but we will receive it for the city council to review. And then the next steps for the project after this report. Currently, the MOU expires on December thirty-first. So, um, we are currently continuing to negotiate the disposition and development agreement with Pale Blue Dot, which is the agreement that governs sale of the property to Pale Blue Dot and the conditions that Pale Blue Dot has to meet in order to be able to purchase the project. We are attempting to bring that back to the city council by the end of the year, by, before December thirty-first. It's possible, but we might not get it back to council by the end of the year. If we don't get it back to council by the end of the year, then we're going to have an item come to council by the end of the year to extend the MOU once again, to give us more time to keep negotiating and working on the disposition and development agreement. So, um, the council can receive and file this report tonight. You can, um, consider the conclusions and the findings in this report when you are deciding later on this year, or maybe afterwards, uh, whether to continue with this project and approve the disposition development agreement. And that is the status of where we are with this project right now. Uh, I think that concludes the staff report. Sorry, it was a little lengthy. I am available for questions.
Well, it is a lengthy report, and even though the details cannot be fully revealed, it, there is quite a bit to still read through and understand, um, on behalf of our community. I, I, I'll yield the floor to Councilmember Cordova in a minute, but, um, I think it's important that the community realize, we, we were able to speak with the consultant in closed session. The consultant is available to come to a future meeting and be a part of a more lengthy discussion. Uh, and so that is an opportunity for us. And so, um, current questions that we ask of the city attorney will likely be only something he can relate back to the current report, just as transparency with the community, um, why we might not be able to answer everything tonight. Councilmember Cordova.
Thank you, Mayor Osborne, and I agree with that. So just, I have a couple of questions, and then I think in, I, I want to discuss a couple points as well. So, um, city attorney, at what point in time does the public get to see Pale Blue Dot's financials, or will they ever?
I, I don't believe that that's ever going to be public information, um, unless there were, Pale Blue Dot were to be willing to consent to disclose it publicly, but, um, I don't believe that's going to happen before the project starts operating, and even after the project starts operating, that information probably will not be made public.
So we really, um, have to heavily rely on these, on these consultant reports, these evaluations, these feasibility reports, to genuinely tell us whether we're making the right decision on behalf of this community or not, so I just want to point that out. A comment that I have is, so in April, when we received the first feasibility report, there was, um, a slew of bullet points also that came, um, with that, and that was mainly associated with the, um, developmental cost at that time. The, um, consultant said, we don't have, here's, here's where we don't see it's feasible when it comes to construction, when it comes to operating costs, when it comes to a lot of things, but they said, but we don't have this one component specialty, and that is theme parks. Um, when it, when it comes to the cost of ticket prices, and when it comes to the actual operation of a theme park, we don't have that specialty, but we have this, we have enough knowledge and specialty to, to look at the overall project based on everything else. And they gave us, and a lot of their bullet points said, this is not feasible. In this particular, um, feasibility study, or in this particular consultant's report, they actually have that specialty, and they're saying, you know, that they have some concerns which the city attorney just pointed out, so I do want to, I do want to bring that forward. I think that if we combine them, we can look at that. The second point that I want to make is, is that, as, as the city attorney just stated, we have an MOU that is set to potentially expire, or we will be extending, um, granting another extension to continue this forward. My concern is this. We were asked a few weeks ago that we needed to make a decision now to get this on the ballot for hopefully the primary election, which was March. It was like, get it done now. We had literally a couple of days to make that, to make that, to make that evaluation, and council was asked to make that decision. The developer did take four months to respond to the last feasibility study, or the last consultant, um, report that came out, and they just submitted their response literally, um, in August, or when, when, when did they submit their response to that?
They submitted that in August.
In August, okay. So what I don't want to do, because there's things that are being triggered here, and I think that it's fair to the public, again, if this is going to go to the ballot in November, and the public is going to be asked to, um, make a decision on whether they want to give up their land, then they should have all the information and all the responses upfront with enough time for them to be able to evaluate that. So due to the fact that it's an MOU that is set to expire potentially at the end of the year, or an extension be granted, and we're looking at a ballot measure for November of next year, I think it's fair to, to maybe consider setting a date, um, in response to this particular thing, and allowing maybe the, the consultant to come back, explain it, and that way it gives the public time to come in, listen, have the full presentation, have the developer respond. Those are just some of the things that are floating around in my mind when I, when I read this, and I saw it under consent, and I thought to myself, I think we need to pull it out of consent, and we need to at least present it and then discuss possibilities.
The consultant, uh, Mr. Dvorak, he is willing to come to present his report, um, in a session like this. He's just traveling today and was not available to be here in person today.
Okay. I believe because we pulled it, we need to take public comment?
Yes.
Okay. So if there are no other questions at the moment for staff, we will open the floor for public comment on this item. If you'd like to speak, uh, regarding, um, the process or, you know, initial reading of it, you're welcome to come to the podium for three minutes, or you may call in at eight zero five eight seven five eight two zero one.
Hello, Carl Jones. I'm just requesting that we get both reports at the same time. So we get a refresher about the last report and kind of put them both together, you know, maybe some kind of report in general from both the studies, and then even allow, you know, Pale Blue Dot to answer. You know, just, so we have it all in one, one basket, because April's a long time away. I don't remember, I'm old. I'd have to go back and, you know, search through all kinds of records to find it. I just, you know, I think we have it available. They could probably easily pull up the old PowerPoints and, you know, put them both together. Just, just to get it out there to the public. That way we can make an honest decision. That's all I'm asking. So I'm just requesting that we just do one giant report with both, both studies. Thank you.
So I heard that the, um, proposed admission would be higher than the average theme park admission. To me, that says, will the average citizen be able to even enjoy this place? Would they be able to take their family there? Would they be able to benefit from this project? Or is this going to be a tourist thing and leaving local families out? And to me, I think if they're going to charge higher than average admissions, they should at least have a discount or a lower rate for local families, because we're the ones dealing with it. We're the ones dealing with the traffic. We're the ones dealing with the people coming in and out of town, and we're the ones who, you know, who are giving up our land for this project. So if the admission fee is really going to be higher than the average, then maybe something should be done for the, uh, local families so they can enjoy this place, too. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no one else rise and no one calling in, we'll bring it back to council. And I completely agree. I think that having a formal presentation, we've closed public comment, sorry. The, having a formal presentation that includes a sort of review of the original study, so that we're kind of all on the same page, and then a detailed presentation from the consultant regarding this new would be helpful. In looking at it, I see that the November 21st meeting looks like it's going to be quite packed. The December 5th meeting, I understand there's a, one of the feasibility studies coming back to us, is that what I recall?
It's going to be the master fee schedule.
Master fee schedule, okay. So as much as that meeting might be a long meeting, I still think having it on the 5th, if we're going to have to consider an extension at the end of the year, I'd hate to have the discussion and the extension of the MOU in the same meeting. I figured the MOU will happen at the later meeting on December 19th. I'm worried that having the presentation won't give the public enough time to think about what they're hearing before we consider an extension. So I think staff, take a look at that agenda and see if, you know, doing the presentation that you already planned, and if there's something else that can be pulled, and we have the presentation on this on the 5th, would be beneficial, so that we can have a better presentation on the extension on the 19th, if I'm following how long it might take to get that done. That's going to be my recommendation as a way to give us a window, but I'm looking for staff.
I have no issue with that plan.
Okay. I'm looking at the financial director.
Right, I'm just, to clarify, are you suggesting that we do both presentations then that night, not that we would push the master fee schedule presentation?
No, 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 not push the master fee schedule. Look at other things on the agenda. Like, if it's going to be a really long agenda, I'd rather make this presentation along with the master fee schedule, the two priorities on it, rather than other things that are on it unless they're a deadline that we have to meet. That's my recommendation. Councilmember Ball.
I don't necessarily disagree with that, just a comment, a couple of things. And again, I'll defer to council decides, but we're asking, we're first saying, "Look, this is important to get this out in front of the public. They need to learn about these things. We need to have an open discussion about that." Completely agree with that. But we're also rushing it to some extent, in that we want this to happen on December 5th. We want to put this on a busy agenda. We want to hope that a lot of people show up and maybe sit here for an hour or two until we get to that agenda item. And then we have a deep, dark conversation about this item in front of a few people that may have stayed awake long enough to talk about it. I'm just suggesting that this should, I completely agree with Councilwoman Cordova, this should be a very open, transparent conversation from our side and from Pale Blue Dot's side. But I'd hate to put it on to an agenda where it just gets hidden and we don't get till 9:45 at night, and only a few people get to observe this. We're not getting the word out. We're not communicating with the people that need to learn about this, if we're just putting it in a late agenda some night in the future. So just something to consider.
And that's okay, that's good feedback. The next one is the 19th. I fear that won't be great participation, because it's already holiday season, and we've seen how that.
And I didn't want to say it, but I'd say anything in December between Thanksgiving and Christmas tends to be a very distracted time for everybody.
Other thoughts? Again, I'm trying to balance timelines at the same time, transparency and discussion. Councilmember, who had it on first? Councilmember Vega.
Yeah, and I tend to agree that the long meetings are not conducive to getting people to understand or listen, so I'm not sure if we even have time for a special meeting or not. But I can tell you, I agree with Councilmember Ball. I don't think the public's going to participate if it's too late and too long, and we want them to hear the information.
Okay. So potentially, a special meeting could be considered. All right, Councilmember Starbuck.
That was my input. I would suggest a special meeting for it.
Okay. We can have a special meeting. I know that that only requires a 24-hour notice, but given the planning and getting the consultant here for that date, I would default to our city clerk to be able to tell us a date. I'm working on pulling up a calendar, so I can see what conflicts might exist between now and then.
My first thought would be the 12th, but my assumption is that the city attorney may have to consult with the consultant to see when he or she is available.
I'll have to do that for any date other than the 21st or the 5th, because I know he's available on those, but for any other date, I'll have to consult with him.
Yes. I don't have the calendar in front of me for the use of the council chamber, and I know that the city attorney has another.
The only conflict is Parks and Recs is what's on my calendar.
We can always move, bump the Parks and Recs.
Yeah, move the Parks and Recs.
But I think the city attorney may have a conflict on the 12th.
Nope, that's right, because...
I'm not available on second, fourth Tuesdays.
Right.
Wednesday after a council meeting can work.
So...
Thursday after a council meeting.
Like December 6th, or... Or... Yeah, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving isn't conducive to good public turnout. What about the 6th, the December 6th?
December 6th, or December 7th?
I can do the 6th right now. That's December 6th, it's the Wednesday, it's the day after council, so it'd be a special meeting the day after. Thursday, I'm tentatively scheduled to be at SB CAG's CalHOG, so I wouldn't be here. But I could choose not to go to that. It's not a priority, so if... Does anybody else have a conflict with the 7th?
I think that the day after council would work, but it's just, I was looking for a break in between, but if not, let's get it done.
Yeah, I think staying with the 6th is better. I, that way, you know, it's, yeah, I think December 6th is the better solution.
As long as that's the only agenda item, I think.
There would be a special meeting just to discuss.
I don't want to have to dance with a bunch of others.
I'll have a lot of special reports.
Thank you, Jim. Appreciate it.
Okay, so I will amend my motion, that we have a special meeting on December 6th, if the consultant is available, and if not, if he could suggest some dates, and the city clerk could then reach out to us if there's any change. That would be my motion.
At 6:30?
At 6:30.
Thank you.
We'll do it as standard time. Councilmember Cordova.
At 6:30 to 7:30, is that what that is?
Planned for a little bit longer.
So your motion would be to have the special meeting to review, invite the consultant to come in, give us his presentation, his reasoning, his actual review of it, answer whatever questions we have. Does that include giving the developer an opportunity to answer to this, since the city attorney said that they were preparing already a response to this feasibility study?
And I would add that the city attorney could check with Pale Blue Dot to see if their response could be provided by that time, so that we can include it.
Yes, and the developer will always be able to speak as a member of the public, but I think it probably also be appropriate to have...
Some additional time set aside.
Some extra time at that meeting to respond as well.
Absolutely, yeah. Okay. That's my motion.
Then I would give you a second.
All right. Anything that is left unsaid or questionable? Madam Clerk?
I just want to make sure that you also are directing staff to provide a presentation on the previous...
Yeah, the feasibility study that did the, just bring back the overview of the original assessment that had all the other portions, as a way to refresh not only our memory, but as the public said, their memory, because it's been a while. Okay. So yes, that's what it includes. Thankfully, my city attorney nodded his head and said he could do that.
Yes.
All right. Okay. It's been moved, it's been seconded, we've discussed and clarified, let's vote. Oh, I, thank you, redo. That would have been awful, right? All right, 5-0. I accidentally hit the wrong button. Happens when we're getting close to being done. All right, so that passes 5-0. We will promote that and make sure the public has as much information ahead of time to know it's a good time to arrive and provide in foot. All right, this is your final chance for an oral communication regarding city manners at this meeting. If you'd like to speak, you have two minutes, so come on down to the podium, or call in at 805-875-8201.
So this has to do not with just the city, not with even our county, state, or even country. The situation in Israel is not between Israel and Palestine. It is between Israel and Hamas. And people need to realize that there are innocent people in Palestine, in Gaza, who are losing their lives over this. We need to be praying for these people who are suffering through this war that is happening. There are innocent civilians who have been slaughtered inside their churches, inside their hospitals, and this, we all need to take a moment and pray for a peaceful outcome to this, and for cool-headed, for cool heads to come, because we all need peace in this world, and we need to realize that this isn't Palestine, that's, you know, that's the bad guys, it's Hamas. And we just need to maybe understand things a little bit more, maybe even talk to some of our neighbors who may be from that part of the world, and have some understanding on what the situation is over there, and what life is over there, and what's really happening. Thank you very much.
All right. Seeing no one else rise and no one call in, we'll close our final oral communications and bring it back to council for comments and reports. Councilmember Cordova.
No reports.
Okay. Councilmember Starbuck.
Well, I want to complicate things about meetings. November, we were supposed to have a report. I don't want to catch Mr. Arias flat-footed here, but the police, I think, were supposed to come back with our opioid remediation uses. It was a grant we got, this has been a while ago, I just was, and I was going through some papers and found my list, and it says that at November meeting, we were going to discuss this. I, and I looked on the upcoming council agenda items, it's not listed, so what I'm going to do is leave this with you, Ms. Donnelly, and we could do a little homework on it, but this involved money that the police department had received for opioid remediation, there was going to be a report back on it.
We can definitely bring that back. I don't know if it was on the November calendar or not, but it is a report that we can bring.
It's not, I just found it and I looked, and I didn't, but while we were discussing...
I'm sorry, Chief is bringing it back?
Yeah, but I have no reports.
All right, but thanks for checking on that. Councilmember Vega.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Councilmember Ball.
So I'll just go talk about the big one, there's a couple of little things that happened, but the biggest thing that's happened, and the mayor was there, it was obviously an amazing day yesterday, we both attended the Lompoc Theater Project, finally getting a big check from the state. Senator Monique Lamone and Assemblymember Greg Hart put their heads together at the state level, found some monies and some state arts funds, and what do you know, showed up in Lompoc yesterday with a check for $2.285 million. It's going to go to help revitalize the Lompoc Theater. Now, a lot of people are still, "Well, just a theater, that's just theater," but I really feel if we can get over the, if we can get over the hump with this and get that maybe open, the economic impact that it could have in downtown, the walkability, the night activities that would happen, the people that might see the incentive to open a restaurant, or several restaurants, and continue to build this culture of downtown. And I also think about the potential of the hard-working families here in Lompoc, that pretty regularly, when they want to entertain their families, they got to get in the car, and they got to drive to Santa Maria to go to bigger movie theater, or go to do something fun, so, or to see some entertainment. So the opportunity to keep people locally here, spending their dollars and their funds here in town, I think is a great, great asset to us in the future. And just to think about the kids, that maybe, maybe, after years and decades of feeling in some ways that Lompoc just doesn't really believe in their future, hasn't invested in them as much as it could, maybe, maybe, if this can get across the finish line, some of our kids might begin to believe that Lompoc believes in them a little bit more than it has in the past. So again, I just want to congratulate the Lompoc Theater Project, they've been steadfast, I've been following them for 11 years, treading water, trying to figure out how to do something, and this is, this is a big yet, I hope this is the first step of many, but it's a really exciting time for Lompoc, so I was excited to be there, and I'm excited for the future. Thank you.
Yes, I was in attendance. Before I was elected, I served on the theater project board, so this is a huge step forward, and I know they've, they've got some plans on how to utilize that 2.2 million to get closer to reopening and doing it in phases. The city handed the theater over to the theater project for a dollar and waived the nearly million-dollar RDA loan that was held by the prior entity against it, so that they could get started. So this is, this is a big step forward. So lots of meetings going on at the end of last month and the beginning of this month. So I attended the Lompoc Community Health Organization's transportation kickoff meeting. They won the grant in partnership with the city to improve some of the bicycle and walk pathways to and from several areas. They've got a plan put together, it's well organized, and they'll begin to have community meetings and provide impact and information back to the city as we partner to implement those things. The Air Pollution Control District Board, the Santa Barbara County Area of Governments. I've had many people ask about Robinson Bridge. It is part of Caltrans' work progress. They are in the first phase, it is now going through planning, and the state has seen additional SB 1 dollars, so SB CAG is asking the state to consider accelerating the project now that there's additional funds, and maybe prioritize this project. So we're keeping on it, but it is already in planning and moving forward, so that's a good thing, we would just love to see it happen sooner. I attended the League of California's Santa Barbara County City Manager Mayor's meeting. I had the honor with Councilmember Cordova to attend the Vandenberg Space Force Base 76th Birthday Gala, and the Local Area Formation Committee's meeting was last month, so LAFCO. Also recently attended a local, regional, Santa Barbara County Ventura Counties US Conference of Mayors meeting to talk about what they're advocating on behalf of our cities and what their priorities are, and if they align with our local needs, and housing and workforce development are a priority there. I did attend Project Opioids, sponsorship of the Drug Enforcement Agency's Family Summit on Fentanyl that the local Project Opioid through Sheriff Bill Brown organized, where we got to sit with families that had experienced losses due to the fentanyl issue that we're all dealing with, and hear about progress and what's being done to address it, but really mostly to give those families a chance to be heard, seen, and feel supported. So I was very honored to be there for that. I attended the United Way's Real Cost Measure presentation. It's done every couple of years, it's a really well-done additional study that is beneficial for our city to use in grants, for nonprofits to use in grants, to show what the actual cost is for living in this county and the different areas. It's a resource on the United Way page that any of you can access, it is free, and it's an excellent resource for data, especially when plowing. It is free and it's an excellent resource for data, especially when applying for grants. I attended the Northern California Power Agency's Executive and Regular Meeting, Route One. The mobile market is moving into its new phase. They're doing fundraisers. I attended that fundraiser. Much of the money that helped them get started during the pandemic has gone away. And so they're having to identify new funding sources to keep delivering a very unique program that started in Lompoc and other communities in the county are begging for it, but we have the benefit of having local mobile food truck from farmers within 10 miles on it. So it's really something and they take EBT cards. And if you shop at the truck with your EBT card, you get nearly a 50% discount. So it is getting the food back into the hands of many of those who harvest it and maybe not, don't get to see it because it's too expensive in the stores, so your money goes a lot further by shopping with them. We had Make a Difference Day on the 28th. I want to thank all the departments and the staff that worked on a Saturday to help us get it done, for the volunteers that did turn out, whether it was at City Hall here, putting new mulch down, or it was at the drought tolerant area, cleaning that up and making it beautified, whether you were at the Bike Skills Park or some of the other areas in town, or you just decided to pick up trash that day. I really want to say thank you to everybody. City Hall's trick or treat, along with several divisions, that was a lot of fun. It was, I think the best thing I heard that day was from a mother who said, I don't necessarily take my kids trick or treating in the neighborhoods, but I know I can trust coming to City Hall and to the library and the police and the fire department and the rec center. And so she was making sure her kids took advantage of it and I just want to thank all the departments. It was a lot of fun to see everybody in costume. As mentioned, City Hall will be closed this Friday in observation of Veterans Day. The Community Veterans Day Celebration will be on Saturday at the Veterans Hall at the end of H Street and will happen at 11:00 a.m. It is open to the public and we welcome you all to attend and thank our veterans for their service. I want to do a thank you to St. Mary's Episcopal Church for their First Responders Appreciation Luncheon. They do a great job of putting together a lunch that is served to not only the Lompoc Police and Fire Department, but to the sheriffs, the county fire, Vandenberg's fire and safety teams. And those that can attend because they're on duty, they pack all of the food and send it back with those that have attended. So it even gets back in and they do it every year and it's, it's a very nice ceremony. I couldn't attend this year because it conflicted with Northern California Power Agency, but I really do appreciate that. I want to congratulate, he's not here anymore, he's probably sitting in his office watching this, but Brad Wilkie has come out of retirement and will become our, has become our utility director. So I want to welcome him back to the team. He's been integral to a lot of the contracts we're working on with the base and moving things forward, so it's nice to have somebody with his experience and knowledge working on the team and managing that division. I want to congratulate the Lompoc Police Officer Kevin Cromer for receiving the Lompoc ELCS Outstanding Professional for the 2023 Award in Public Safety. And then the Lompoc Fire Department Captain John Stephens for receiving the Lompoc ELCS 2023 Firefighter of the Year Award. And I want to thank the ELCS for noting that and embracing that. Small Business Shop Small Saturday happens. The way to participate, check in with the chamber. If you'd like to participate, they have multiple and some new ways. They have a deadline to register by November 17th. I love doing shop small. I look forward to it every year, so it's a great way to introduce, remind the community. And if you're a home-based business, they have an opportunity this year with a area they're setting up in Old Town. So please not only participate in it, but go out and shop and support our locals. Future, a local organization that is helping our youth have different opportunities and get prepared for doing better in the world than they might otherwise have, has hired its first executive director and one of its founders, Chuck Madsen. And secondly, they are looking for mentors. They're having their mentor information session on the 13th of November from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Lompoc High Library. And I ask that anyone and everyone in the community consider attending this and exploring, potentially becoming a mentor. The more these youth are exposed to different opportunities and different paths through mentors will open doors for them they may never have had before. So I just want to say congratulations to Chuck and make that appeal. And with that, I know it was a lot, but a lot's going on, which is always good, I want to say congratulations to the Lompoc High School Marching Band who came in third at the competition last weekend in Oxnard, and to Cabrillo High School Marching Band who came in first. They are having a public performance this Friday at 6:00 p.m. at the Lompoc Community Track and Field. Come out, it's free, enjoy, support. I was a band geek. Come out, enjoy a free concert put on by our local high school marching bands and really show your support for our community. With that, we will adjourn until our next regular meeting at 6:30 p.m. on November 21st, 2023.